Good afternoon, everyone. Today is December 9th, 2024. The council briefing meeting will come to order, and the time is 2:04 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kettle?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
Councilmember Rink?
Here.
Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Saka?
Here.
Councilmember Strauss?
Present.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Here.
Council President Nelson?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you very much.
We have no proclamations or presentations or executive session today. And on tomorrow's city council meeting agenda, there are six items on the introduction and we're full calendar. The weekly bill payment ordinance, Council Bill 120925, Human Resources Fourth Quarter Employment Ordinance, an appointment to the Seattle Women's Commission, and three transportation items, including Council Bill 120924, allowing the Pike Place Market Preservation and Development Authority to continue operating a skybridge over Western Avenue, and Resolutions 32158 and 32159, respectively granting conceptual approval to install a pedestrian tunnel across Bourne Avenue North, north of Denning Way, and to install a thermal energy exchange system there, too. All right, and the consent calendar includes last week's minutes and the weekly bill payment ordinance. And there are three pieces of legislation under committee reports as well. And those are Council Bill 120833 from the Land Use Committee, which clarifies bonus allowances in the Living Building Pilot Program, which Councilmember Morales can further explain tomorrow, Council Bill 120919, which authorizes certain nonrepresented city employees to get the same wage increases and adjustments for 2025 and 2026 that the city agreed to with the Coalition of City Unions, and Council Bill 120920, which adjusts the pay bans for discretionary pay programs, which generally include higher-ranking city employees. And that is to reflect the wage increases and adjustments that are part of Council Bill 120919. And both of these last two labor bills, as usual, are going directly to the full city council, as is not via committee, in line with past practice. And then finally, I want to address the upcoming vacancy effective January 6th of the District 2 position. And luckily, this is not our first rodeo. We've done this in the beginning of this year, and the upcoming vacancy filling process will largely replicate this year's, or the beginning of this year's. And to that end, I've been in touch with our communications team and the Office of City Clerk and our internal legal counsel to address the next steps. And top of the list is to make information available to the public. And the goal is to have the informational website up by the end of this week. I can say that the tentative dates for the application period are January 2nd to the 9th. And as I said, we'll launch the website, which will have those dates with more certainty by the end of this week. And although the application portal will not open until January, the website we plan to launch will have information on when we'll have public meetings, when the public can offer comment, and when we'll have a public forum, et cetera. All of those details will be available shortly. And then for council members, those of you who were here last year may remember that we canceled committees during the vacancy filling process time. And that was largely because at the beginning, there wasn't a lot in the pipeline, and most people were new, and so therefore it didn't have a legislative calendar and projects already happening, mediating a vote. That is not the plan this year. There is no plan right now to cancel any committee meetings, barring whatever you all need to cancel for your own schedules. And the hope is that we can keep the comp plan meetings and process going as planned and so that we don't lose any time on that. So I just would like you to give me word if you're thinking about canceling any meetings, but that is generally the practice, and you can work with the clerks when it comes to when you need to do that, as usual. So I guess what I'm saying is that as we stand right now, the beginning of the year will likely be like any other beginning of the year with things being determined by what's in the committee pipeline. Okay. Any questions? All right. So, as I said, there are no letters or proclamations or anything like that today, so let's just go right into our round robin section. And the roll call order begins with Councilmember Kettle.
Okay. Well, I'm glad I'm here at this seat to start off. For this week, in the Public Safety Committee, we have two briefings. One is on the 30 by 30 program, so we'll have a briefing on that, which is really important. And secondly, we also have a briefing on crowd management. We have less lethal weapon legislation coming in. And as we talked about before, this is very important as we look to coordinate with the federal monitor, judge, everything related to the consent decree, the different pieces that are needed in order to work the requirements as given to us by the court. And so we're going to start that process up tomorrow in the Public Safety Committee. I also wanted to note that tomorrow, we also have an OPCD D-7 Comprehensive Plan Meeting at Seattle Center. Very important, and this will build off of our meeting that did not include OPCD last week in Queen Anne on the same topic. Wednesday, West Precinct Advisory Council, very important. I know some of us have examples in other precincts. Really important, the work that they do in terms of neighborhood safety for the precinct. Thursday, PSRC Transportation Policy Board with my colleague, Councilmember Saka. And then there's also the Lead Policy Coordinating Group. I'll look to attend that. That's at the same time generally as the Governance Accountability Committee Meeting. And then on Friday, we have a market-to-Mohi kind of event that we're going to be working through in community. And then there's the Domestic Violence Prevention Council, which will be later that day on Friday. Separately, I also wanted to note that there's been a lot of challenges in some of our communities with after-hour lounges. And we have legislation that we're working up that. It's in the calendar, and we're working it up with Councilmember Hollingsworth and other members of the committee and the council. But I really appreciate support on this, and I think it's really something, as you know, this week we had another shooting where five were shot. And this is something that's really been impacting communities. So these after-hour lounges, the issues that are coming about need to be addressed, and this is the piece related to the legislation that we have on it. Lastly, I just want to say thank you for last week, the meetings with the South Lake Community Council, particularly also the Queen Anne Community Council, which had a big, well-attended meeting on the comprehensive plan. And I also want to give a shout out to the Seattle CEO Roundtable, which is the CEOs of the arts and culture community, gained incredible insight in terms of the challenges that they're facing as an arts and culture community. And a lot of them are nonprofit, but as somebody noted, not for-profit. They have some of the same challenges that businesses and others have in terms of meet and payroll. They have challenges as it relates to increasing costs, but it's really hard to increase revenue. So getting the insight, the kind of nuts and bolts, on-the-ground challenges that our arts and culture community is facing is really helpful because it helps inform perspective as we're trying to facilitate an environment where they can succeed. And part of this is public safety. They need patrons, they need customers, they need people to come to the events, so there's all that piece. But then there's also those kinds of fundamental things you don't necessarily think about with the arts and culture community, which is, I just want to say thank you to them for their time. Appreciate it. And that is all, Madam President.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you very much, Council President. So, let's see. Wednesday is the next meeting of the Housing and Human Services Committee. On the agenda are 10 commission appointments for possible vote, three briefings, an RSJI presentation from the Office of Housing, Human Services Department's 2025 HUD Annual Action Plan, and also an RSJI presentation from the Women's Services Department. For external committees, I will be attending the KCRA 2024 Open Housing this Thursday, as well as the Monthly Aging and Disability Services Advisory Council this Friday. I will also be meeting with a number of director of providers around the commercial sexual exploitation work to make sure that the service provision pieces and the curriculum development pieces of the legislation are moving forward smoothly and as we anticipated. And lastly, I wanted to thank Councilmember Rink, as well as King County Councilmember Barone, State Rep Re-Imagining Coalition Audit of Aurora.
Councilmember Moore, could you speak more directly, or could you move your mic closer? Thank you. Councilmember Moore, could you speak more directly, or could you move your mic closer? Thank you.
That makes my face very big. Sorry about that. I'll try to be there in person next week. So just wanted to thank everybody, all the various representatives from the state, the region, the county, and locally who attended the Aurora Avenue North Reimagined Coalition Audit. It is very much a multi-jurisdictional responsibility and issue, so I'm encouraged to see all of those levels of government participating, and I'm looking forward to seeing advancement of that agenda. And then lastly, I will be starting up my office hours again this Thursday, and we'll be meeting every Thursday and the first Saturday of every month. If there are no questions, I'll turn over to Councilmember Morales. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, colleagues. I will start by acknowledging my pending departure from council and let folks know that my team and I are preparing a binder with some transition documents to offer support to whoever gets appointed to the seat. And then, as a reminder, as Council President said, my last day in office will be January 6th, 2025. There is one item from the Land Use Committee on tomorrow's agenda, Council Bill 120833, related to the Living Building Pilot Program. Again, this legislation amends the land use code to clarify that projects in the pilot program can use height bonuses to exceed 145 feet in height regardless of the lot size in the downtown mixed residential zone. I understand Councilmember Kettle will have an amendment for tomorrow. The committee did recommend that the bill pass with four in favor and one abstention. Wednesday afternoon, I have the King County Growth Management Policy Committee meeting. Last week, I attended the D-2 Community Meeting on the Comprehensive Plan at Jefferson Community Center in Beacon Hill. It was better attended than the previous comp plan meeting that was at Cleveland High School, I think, both because Beacon Hill is a little more accessible. But also, candidly, there was a lot of people there from Queen Anne, which is fine. They will have their own meeting this week, though, so I do think it's important that, particularly in the South End, that South End residents have a chance to speak to city departments and to their elected leaders and have that time set aside for them. Anyway, let's see. Also, this weekend, I attended the Moms Rising Conference. They had a legislative preparation meeting to go over their legislative agenda for session. If you don't know, it's a statewide organization, really advocating for, really for working family issues, but driven by women and really making sure that the perspective of moms is included in the legislative agenda for people across the state. My staff attended a professional development opportunity in Chicago last week. They joined the National Urban League's Restore, Reinvest, and Renew Conference to discuss a national campaign for reparations. And my staff also attended the 10-year anniversary celebration of Creative Justice. At Washington Hall, we had a lot of South End artists performing. Creative Justice is, it was also a fundraiser. And sort of to what Councilmember Kettle alluded to, we know that we have a lot of nonprofit arts-based organizations who do rely heavily on public support, whether it's from the public sector or from philanthropy. And they connect us to storytelling and arts and culture in a really powerful and important way. Creative Justice works especially with young people. So I do appreciate Councilmember Kettle's point about, you know, these organizations may be nonprofits, but that is a tax status, not a business model. And so they do also need to be able to generate revenue to provide the support and programming and staffing that makes these programs so important. So anyway, I want to send congratulations out to Creative Justice. And that is all I have. I will pass it to Councilmember Rink.
Hello? All right. Thank you. Well, good afternoon, everybody. As usual, excited to be here. I just want to kick off by also just speaking to the announcement from last week. Councilmember Morales, thank you for your service. You will be greatly missed and looking forward to finding an individual who can truly champion and represent the needs of D-2. In a nutshell, Sustainability City Light Arts and Culture Committee will resume meeting in January. We will not have a meeting on the 20th, so you can take that off your calendars. We will have our first meeting of the year on January 3rd, where we will be having a briefing from City Light about the response to the outages from the windstorm. They're actually having a debrief this week, so we should be able to get the results of their, you know, main takeaways from their response times. For my external committees, the Regional Policy Committee, which was scheduled for the 11th, has been canceled. And as it relates to, again, my team getting fully up to speed, our team has been meeting with city departments that report to our committee. Last Friday, we met with City Light leadership, including CEO Don Lindell, for our orientation and discussion about the year ahead and the future for City Light. Earlier today, we got our orientation with the Office of Sustainability, and we are meeting with the Office of Arts and Culture this Thursday. And in the midst of so many trainings, my team has been prioritizing time to meet with community partners. Two of our, two members of our office attended the Comp Plan Open House in D-2 last week. We also joined some of our union partners from Sailors Union Pacific and Longshoreman to get a full maritime tour and even got to operate a crane. Very cool, would recommend. And then our office co-convened a session with King County Councilmember Jorge Barone, a meeting including government and nonprofit partners to discuss responses to the incoming federal administration's immigration policy. OIRA and OIR were a part of this call, as well as partners from labor, community-based organizations that work with immigrants and refugees as well. And we're intending to bring folks together in the coming weeks again, and that call had about 30 participants across community. And lastly, over the weekend, yes, I was happy to join a number of partners for the Aurora Reimagined Coalition Tour in D-5. It was really encouraging to see so many folks across different levels of government come together to talk about how we can really improve the area and serve community. And that concludes my updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Last week, my staff attended the Safe Schools Student Leadership Conference to hear the presentation on youth violence prevention and to listen to what the students and young people had to say. The entire event was student-organized and led, which was very impressive to see these young people so engaged. What we heard was students feeling concerned about the increase in crime and guns in and around their schools, including in the North End. I know we share their concerns collectively, and our city departments continue to work to address safety for our young people at the city, around the city. And Seattle Public Schools and Seattle Police Department have been partnering around and in the schools. This is why it was so important to me to add funding to the Human Services Department to start a North End Youth Safety Hub with Councilmember Moore's support. Councilmember Moore, thank you for that, which I know HSD will be working on, starting at the new year, and I will keep you all posted as that progresses. And we know we have a hub on the South End already, and so there are a lot of folks coming together to really listen to students, listen to our young people, and to find ways to really keep them safe. On Friday, I delivered remarks at this year's Boards and Commissions Appreciation Reception. I got to meet a lot of generous people who volunteer their time to be on the city's many boards and commissions. We have over 70. It was very well-attended, which just speaks volumes as to how passionate these volunteers are about ensuring the city is working for everyone. I have to say, for a Friday evening, it was a packed event, and it was really great to be a part of that. Really appreciate the work that the boards and commissions do, particularly as we're doing our policy work. And I know as the mayor's office is doing their work, to really hear from community members as to what they would like to see. So these are really important advisory councils that advise us. And, you know, just like I said, very grateful for their work and to have been there with them. And I got to talk to a lot of amazing people and young people, too. So that was a very, very great event. I also attended the Building Trades Holiday Party. I am so grateful to their leadership, including Monte Anderson, for their partnership and really to be included. I also attended the University District Partnership Holiday Function. That's the U District's Business Improvement Area Organization. They do a lot of important work in the D-4, keeping the area safe and clean. They have an ambassador program that not only helps their small businesses, they also help the nonprofits that are in the area, and also the residents. They really do a lot. They do also a great job coordinating with the University of Washington, so I want to thank their executive director, Don Blakeney, for his work. He's been a great partner. And I know many of you will be jealous to hear that I got to high-five Dubs, the U-Dub mascot, at the University of Washington's holiday reception. He really is a great dog, and this is a real-life dog, not the mascot that you see at the football game. So that was really, really fun for me. The University of Washington is such a great partner in the district, and it was really lovely to see so many members of the D-4 community there. I also got a chance to thank U-Dub President Anamari Kausa for her many years of service to the school. She'll be retiring this upcoming year, so she'll be around for just a little bit longer, and we're just so grateful for her service. This week, I'm looking forward to attending both the Public Safety and the Housing and Human Services Committee meetings, again, as we get back to our regular committee schedules post-budget. While, as you know, I'm not a member of those committees, I attend so I can ask questions and give feedback. These are all issues that are really important to the constituents in the district that I represent. I'll also be back to regular scheduling for the Libraries Education and Neighborhoods Committee, which will take place this Thursday. The Seattle Public Library will be presenting on their adopted 10-year strategic plan, so looking forward to hearing from them on that. On Friday, I'm also going to be meeting with Superintendent AP Diaz, Seattle Parks and Recreation Superintendent, to discuss some recent parks' issues that are of concern and interest to the D-4, one of which is the potential proposal to turn a portion of Wallingford Play Field into an athletic field for Lincoln High School and Hamilton Middle School. I've talked about this before. This is something that is not a done deal. It's something that Seattle Public Schools would like to see, but they are in the outreach phase in talking to folks and community. And ultimately, it's the superintendent that gets to make the decision, so look forward to hearing more about that and continuing engagement with Superintendent Diaz around that. Also related to Magnusson Park, we'll be talking to him about the crime near and in the park. We know that the North Precinct continues to be a great partner in that space, as have the superintendent via the Park Rangers. They continue to have the, they meaning, North Precinct continues to have night patrols at Magnusson Park, and they've added additional daytime patrols as available. Last year, Captain Agard also located the mobile precinct at Magnusson all week. And I know I heard from residents and parents who bring their kids to the park who are grateful for the added presence. So I too am grateful to Seattle Police Departments, for Seattle Police Department's presence, and I'll continue to work with SPD and the mayor's office on the safety issues, not just at the park, but around the district. Happy to answer any questions, and if not, we'll pass it on.
No questions.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Strauss? No. Saka, sorry.
Sure. Well, thank you, Madam Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. I guess first and foremost, administratively excited to announce that we're going to resume my normal office hours later this week, starting later this week, and have another session next week. But really love and appreciate office hours. It's a great chance to connect with, directly with constituents, and so excited to resume that. Sadly, you know, there was yet another tragic gun violence-related killing in my district last week by a 15-year, or where the victim was a 15-year-old. 15-year-old Sudaisi Ida, who was another chief South International High School student, tragically died by gun violence on December 4th. And I have been directly in touch with the mayor's office about this incident. I have spoken directly and called interim chief Roar, had a great productive conversation with the chief about this incident, this tragedy. And to learn more about next steps and the latest status of this investigation, I hope for a, and we have consummate professionals working diligently within SPD investigators, hoping to find and track down appropriate answers. My hope is that we'd be in a position to have a conclusion and an update shared with the public about the status of this investigation by SPD in fairly short order. Don't want to rush anything, want to make sure the investigation is sound and proper. But I think the public does demand answers on exactly what transpired here, at a bare minimum. So on to the transportation, on a lighter note, moving on to the Transportation Committee. So we have our very next meeting next Tuesday, next Tuesday at 9:30 AM. Excited to have that meeting. We have a number of things on the agenda. I am still finalizing the agenda as we speak, but it's in substantially final form right now. I can say with a great degree of confidence, that's just shy of absolute certainty, can say fairly confidently that there'll be an exciting presentation from SDOT on how the city is prepared to respond to the next extreme winter weather emergency, snow, ice, whatever it is. The public should know that there are a bunch of dedicated individuals within the department that are here to make sure people are able to safely get around and navigate the city when those extreme weather events happen. And so we're going to have a department briefing from SDOT that kind of highlights the preparedness, the current response posture, la niña, right? So we can expect a few of those here in Seattle, unfortunately, this winter. So we're going to have that presentation. We're going to also have a number of, likely have a number of permit briefings and overview kind of conversations. Most of them are renewals. And because, colleagues, it's been a few months since we've confronted the issues of permits, and because we're welcoming a new Cocking Councilmember Rink to this very technical committee, we will also likely have a just general refresher overview on permitting, what that entails, the process. And so, colleagues, you're all welcome at any time to any one of our Transportation Committee meetings. Given the substance of this one, I especially welcome you on the extreme weather events and preparedness. I imagine your constituents might want to know a little more, so we'll be sure to share some resources as well that might flow from that. Moving on to the D-2 vacancy. Council President, I want to thank you and your leadership for, you know, in your role as Council President, making some administrative decisions to set us up for success. role as council president, making some administrative decisions to set us up for success later when we actually go through that process. I do think, notwithstanding your great initial hard work and that's needed today, right now, I do think a fair amount of alignment and finalizing what that process is going to look like, the final process, even if it's substantially similar to what we aligned on in, you know, earlier this year, we'll need to make those decisions in a few weeks. But I just want to share kind of directionally what I'm kind of thinking about this person and the desired qualifications for this role right now. Nothing etched in stone, this is still very fresh, I think, for all of us, but I am definitely thinking that this role, so there's two main factors that I'm kind of thinking about right now, and one is I think this person should ideally be a caretaker for this seat. This is a hard job, colleagues, we know. This job, at a bare minimum, it's a 60-hour-a-week job, 60 to 80-hour-a-week job plus. And then, if you're running a campaign on top of that, to be successful, another 60 to 80-plus hours a week. And absent any major changes and committee restructures, this person is going to be expected to immediately, day one, lead our comp plan select committee process. And so it's a, which comp plan is a very complex and highly technical policy area, as we've learned. And so that which leads me to the second criteria I'm ideally looking for for this is someone who has experience, substantive experience in land use policy. But I could get over that, if that relative lack of experience, if I had comfort that they were going to be a caretaker for this position and not going to run, because if they were focused solely on governing, solely on the, just the nuts and bolts of what this job requires, I don't care who it is, there's a tremendous learning curve. I don't, I personally don't think we'd be setting that person up for success if they intended to run in parallel while working. I don't think we'd be setting their constituents up for success, and I also don't think we'd be setting the city up for success. So that's just directionally where I'm at today, and I want to be fully transparent about how I'm currently thinking about this pending vacancy. All right. Moving on, in the community, done a lot of exciting things, but I guess in the interest of time and brevity, I guess really excited to attend Before the Badge later this week for new recruits to hear more, where they learn more about the vision of SPD and how policing works in our city. Excited to attend that. Just to report out on another regional committee, last Thursday, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Committee Executive Board meeting, where very substantive agenda, did a lot, but among other things, the body finalized its Olympia priority list for next year. And you all recall, we went through the same exercise very recently. And just want to report out one item of note there, one of the approved items on, from that body, was quote, "Exploring stable new revenue sources to address declines in existing revenue, ensure projects of regional significance are built, and fully fund maintenance and preservation." I emphasize "and fully fund" maintenance and preservation. And so that was one of the, of a handful of priorities that are going to be on PSRC's legislative agenda, and I emphasize "fully fund" maintenance and preservation, because that is, of course, what we endeavor to do here in Seattle on, with respect to the new Transportation Funding Task Force that is going to be stood up pursuant to the recently voter-passed, voter-approved levy. There's three main asset classes that we endeavor to fully fund in terms of maintenance and preservation, and in the case of missing sidewalks, complete that sidewalk gap. There is sidewalks, there is our bridge assets, and then also making better progress on the aging condition of our roads all up. So in any event, just wanted to share out that priority, because it aligns with what I think this body and this institution endeavors to do from a transportation policy perspective. Colleagues, that is all I have. I welcome any comments or questions at this time, and if not, I will pass the baton to Councilmember Strauss, who sits on this side of me.
Thank you, Councilmember Saka. Back in the day, at council briefing, we just went around clockwise, we didn't go alphabetically. So whoever was sitting where Bob is sitting, it would just whip around. There's not a right way, there's not a wrong way. Things change. Here we are today. Thank you all. So from Finance, Native Communities and Tribal Governments Committee, committee on the 18th is canceled, so you can take that off your plate. And Councilmember Morales, I was excused from your land use committee. I did attend because it was your last committee, and I shared my expressions on the record regarding your leaving, your departure. And for everyone here, I was the land use chair for four years. We expected to take up the comprehensive plan while I was the chair of the land use committee for those four years, currently sitting as the vice chair, not knowing what we're going to do in the future, but I stand ready to at least be a bridge, because we cannot, we are, we are so late with the comp plan. I was supposed to take it up when I was chair, if that's any explanation right there. So if that does occur, I will cancel the January 6th meeting, just to say, let's meet the following week. But if we miss any meetings in January, we're going to be so far behind the calendar. Yeah, so it's not good. That's it. That's my internal. So external committees, I will be attending the Association of Washington Cities Board Meeting this week, as well, which conflicts with the Sound Transit Expansion Committee, which I will not be attending, but they've got three items. One is about modifying the contract for the 130th Street Station. I call it the Deborah Juarez Station, although that was not one of the official options on the naming outreach survey, although we'll see what we can do. We also have a motion regarding King County Metro regarding the I-405 stride bus rapid transit in Renton. And again, also, the Tacoma Dome Link Extension D draft environmental impact statement will be published on Friday. Public comment period is from December 13th to February 10th. I know that that's not in our city. Here I'm sitting, I'm giving you the report from my external committee, though. In District 6, we continue to do office hours. I've got office hours this week, I'll be doing office hours this Sunday, doing office hours next week, catching up, because we put them on pause during the budget. Just checking to see if I've got any other, we've got work right now, we're just getting ready for next year. And colleagues, if there are no further questions, I'll pass it over to Councilmember Hollingsworth, the joy of our city council.
Nice. Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. I wasn't expecting that. It's kind of weird, I feel like I'm sitting at a big family dinner, like, different heads, and the bow, the stern, the port, starboard, y'all would tip over, we would be fine over here, because y'all are heavy on that side. Parks Utilities Technology Meeting is going to be Wednesday, December 11th at 2:00 p.m. Some things that we have coming down the pipeline, we have, this is last-minute legislation, we were not going to have a meeting, the last, we were not going to have a meeting on 12/11, but there was a lot of legislation coming down, and we obliged. So Seattle Center, lease renewal for Chihuli Gardens, that's going to be briefing discussion, possibly votes, agreement to host Verizon 5G on campus as well, that is to create better connectivity at Seattle Center. Seattle Parks and Rec, acquisition of two parcels of future parkland on Beacon Hill to meet the green space requirements for urban villages. Also, the amendment of the conservation futures legislation to purchase the Beacon Hill parcel, the county, this will go directly into escrow, and authorities, the authorities, I can't read, authorizes acceptance of $3.25 million. That's a brief briefing discussion and vote. And also, Seattle Public Utilities, introduction of Moss Adams Audit. We had a briefing about their audit for 2023. 2024 is about their introduction and process. I have Councilmember Strauss, you are excused for that meeting. Thank you so much. If anyone else needs to be excused, just let me know, and really appreciate you all attention to the meeting. Where are we at? Oh, sorry, Regional Water Committee, I had that with Councilmember Kettle, that was on Wednesday, one of my favorite external committees. We were finalizing our work plan and other, other water quality issues that were coming up, and then also, so really appreciated that meeting with Councilmember Kettle. In the community, super simple, had a District 3 Community Council meeting that I actually stole from you, so we had over 20-plus people there representing all the different districts. We had nobody from Queen Anne, though, Councilmember Morales, nobody came. Just want to let you know, if they did, they would have gotten removed from the Zoom. Also want to thank Ian and Sydney. These are elementary kids that advocated for a sidewalk, or, excuse me, for a crosswalk on 17th and East Union, right in front of the World School, and now we have a crosswalk, beautiful crosswalk that's well-lit, the safe routes to school, and they're the cutest little things ever. You can never be too young to be civically engaged. Also, visit Seattle World School, they have 250 students, grades 9 through 12, 25 language, 20 countries, it's 100% immigrant and refugee students and families. It was a phenomenal experience, and their principal, and they are, they are, old TT Minor School, and it was really fun to engage with the students about government. Also attended the Park Community Fund Project, wanted to share the kind regards from AP Diaz about you, Councilmember Morales, and your staff, and all the projects that you all worked on. And so they just wanted to give you a shout-out. It was really, really nice for him to say a couple of things, and then also to hear all the projects that are citywide. And where am I at? Happy birthday, Josephine Stokes, she turned 100. She lives in the Central District in Leshi, she was a long time, she is, not was, okay, longtime schoolteacher and educator, she was born 1924, and her family, she was born to Charles Stokes, Judge Charles Stokes, and her first husband was a Tuskegee Airmen. And that was pretty cool to meet some of his, not meet, I know them, but to connect with them. Last but not least, I just want to publicly thank Councilmember Morales for your service to our city, and thank you for, I say the south, S-O-U-F-H, and, South End. Just really appreciate the, the community perspective that you brought to the council. I think it was incredibly important to this, that will not be lost. I think it continues, continues, it will continue to go on, and just wanted to thank you publicly. So with that, oh, Councilmember Strauss, you are recognized.
I do have a question, I do have a question for you. The woman's name again?
Oh, Josephine Stokes.
Josephine Stokes. Can we do a proclamation for her? And the reason I ask is because we've got a 100-year-old up in, up in the North End, up in Ballard, who, Lois Morgensen, she is a legend in the North End, 100 years old, turned 100 years old this year, and she was a Rosie the Riveter, amongst other things. And it would be just really a lot of fun to get these two women together.
I, I agree with you, that would be, that would be amazing. Yes, we can do that. And my staff that is watching, we'll get on that. Thank you, Councilmember Strauss, who is sitting, sitting at the bow stern, is that what it is? Okay, thank you.
Depends on which way the boat's coming.
Ooh, got you. All right, thank you. If we're going this way, it's the bow. All right, Council President Nelson.
All right. There is nothing from the Governance Accountability and Economic Development Committee on the agenda tomorrow, but we will be having our next meeting this Thursday at 2:30, and we've got five items on the agenda, which include three appointments and one reappointment to the Domestic Workers Standards Board, and a briefing discussion and possible vote on those appointments. And then we'll have Council Bill 120830, which is Human Resources Fourth Quarter Employment Ordinance for Briefing Discussion and Possible Vote. And I want to thank Karina Bull for, from central staff, who I understand has reached out to all committee members and to brief them ahead of Thursday, because I'm hoping to vote this out in, in one committee meeting. Traditionally, this, the quarterly employment ordinances just went straight to full council. I started a different practice in making them go to committee at the beginning of this year, and so that is a little bit better to have a bit of discussion, but this, we were trying to get through the, this, in one last meeting this year. So if you would like more information about that, contact Karina Bull, and the, the agenda will be out later this afternoon, but it's fairly pro forma. We usually have these quarterly this year, and we've only had one, I believe, the first quarter. But in any case, there's more information if you would like it. So that's this coming week, and then last week, I was pleased to attend the holiday party for the Seattle Building and Construction Trades Council. We missed each other in passing, that's always a good time to, to get caught up with our labor friends and, and just talk about some of the past victories and what's coming up this year. And I do want to note and say congratulations to Heather Kurtinbach, who is the, she's leaving the, the local lady six to head up the new executives, to be the new Executive Secretary of the Washington State Building Trades, which is a, a big promotion. And so she's usually the person that I, that I contact to ask for questions, you know, are you aware of this, or do you have a position on that, or whatever. So I just want to congratulate her on that big promotion and responsibility. That's all I've got for my, my items. I do want to note that, that I want people, in, in response to the preferences stated by Councilmember Saka, I, I don't want that to dissuade anyone from applying who might not fit the profile that was, that was laid out by Councilmember Saka. This is a completely open process, we'll run it by the book, and the qualifications will be the same as last time. Basically, you have to be 18 years old, a citizen of the United States, and live in the district where, that one is representing. And so I just don't want, I just would like everybody to, who's interested in public service and serving District 2, to just be aware that qualifications beyond that have not been discussed or, or determined, and nor has the leadership of the comprehensive plan, the Select Comprehensive Plan Committee. So those things are yet to be determined. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, we're not going to lose any time on comp plan deliberations, but at the same time, I just don't want folks to feel as though they have to be a, an expert on land use to be able to, to be interested in, and chosen nor appointed for this position. All right. With that, it is 2:51, and today's briefing is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.